July 25th, city council study session. We have an agenda in front of us. Do we have a motion on that?
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Passed. We have our agenda seconding on. We have approval of the minutes from July 11th. Any comments on no?
Move approval.
Second.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Opposed? Minutes have been approved. Next item on the agenda is public comments on items that are not on the agenda. Discussion from the public. This is your opportunity. Seeing not a lot of enthusiasm with that. We'll move into our study session calendar, which is discussion of streetscape items for downtown. And is Tab leading with this? Is Travis taking kind of the...
I'll lead with it.
Lead with it. All right. I'll turn it over to Travis.
Thank you. Good evening. Travis Tolliver with the Waverly Chamber of Commerce and Main Street Program. Thank you for having us tonight and discussing streetscape. The purpose of this proposal is to present concepts and ideas which, if incorporated into the Bremer Avenue rebuild project design, could add more convenience, safety, and overall value to our downtown retail district. The ideas tonight will be presented by topic, and we seek your approval to move forward with working alongside WHKS to create a more formal design rendering to be presented at a later date. Our streetscape steering committee consisted of several different avenues of people throughout the community, from city staff, James Bronner, Mike Cherry, Bill Berger, Steve Agley, Ryan Ferrex of Meyer Pharmacies, Cindy Hendrickson of Bo Studio 121, Manetta Jones from Main Street Hair, Reed Koenig, Community Advocate, Anne Sagerman from Renewed Purpose, and Darren Seifkin from Crowdaddy Outdoors. Information was gathered from a number of different sources. The chamber held two concept and design meetings in May, where we invited the public to give us their feedback on what they would like to see when it came to enhancing the different elements of the Bremer Avenue landscape from east to west. The chamber then formed a steering committee, who was charged with taking the gathered information and sifting through it to find practical commonalities which could be incorporated into the proposed design. Steering committee members also spoke face-to-face with several business owners along Bremer Avenue on both east and west side of downtown and in College Town Plaza. They discussed many of the topics we will be reviewing tonight and incorporated their feedback into this proposal. As many of you know or remember, the scenario was forecasted in 2012 and the chamber produced the document, the downtown concept plan. Copies can be provided for you if you wish, although not all the elements of this plan are incorporated in tonight's proposal. Many are, and this document helped to serve as a base for us from which to start and refer to throughout the process. Setting costs aside, the steering committee was focused on providing design elements for this proposal that were functional yet practical to Waverly and to increase safety from the curb to the front of buildings. The committee discarded many concepts they felt were not applicable to the project, including several viable ideas for side streets and public parking areas. However, it is the committee's hope that the opportunity to include these additional concepts can be considered at a later date when the time is appropriate. Lastly, it should be noted that the concepts reviewed tonight are not affected by the number of lanes Bremer Avenue is completed with and was never a focus of this committee. Simply put, streetscapes typically include things that help make an area of a community more pedestrian and user-friendly and easier to navigate. Nationwide, streetscape elements typically include street furniture, benches, trash receptacles, bike racks, et cetera, landscaping, water features, informational and directional signs, public art, lighting, sidewalks, and gathering spaces. Streetscape elements help create a more interesting and functional environment and can also help an image, help to create an image which helps to define the community's character by using unique design elements which reflect local culture and community heritage. By enhancing these elements of a community's main street, studies show that well-designed streetscapes attract local and out-of-market businesses, shopping and tourism, while the assessed property values for the city increase greatly. You will see several examples tonight from throughout Iowa and surrounding states. However, we don't have to look very far to find even more examples of great streetscaping. Our neighbors to the south, Cedar Falls, have done an excellent job of redefining their main street through streetscape design, and I would invite you to notice some of those elements the next time that you are there. It's my pleasure now to introduce the spokesperson for our steering committee, Mr. Steve Agley, who will go through the topics of design with you, assisted by myself and Bill Berger, who was also on the committee.
Thanks Travis.
You're welcome.
Yep, sure. Didn't get the memo? There goes the coordination. As you can see, let's see, the material's gonna be up here?
Yeah.
All right, okay. As you can see, you know, we were a committee appointed to specifically focus on ways in which the Highway 3, whether it's a, eventually, the, just the downtown portion of it, or whether there's a bypass or whatever, the reconditioning and redoing of it can impact on the streetscape concept, and that's mainly what we're, why we're here. And several members of the committee are here, continuing to show their interest. We've had a strong participation from the committee. We have Cindy Hendrickson is here, and Manora Jones, and Anne Sagerman, and Paula Stevenson is also with us. And so that was the sum of the citizen participation in this. The others are listed. And there's been reach out by the committee to talk to affected people along Main Street, other fellow businessmen and all that on a number of these topics so that we could broaden our views and make sure, to determine what the consensus was with respect to some of these things. So that's mainly what we're here to talk to you about. Excuse me?
What?
No, that's okay. That's okay. This is a highly rehearsed thing. You know, this is a, this is a regulation dog and pony show, and we're trying to put it together here right now. But what we came up with in the work of the committee is that there are about a half dozen things that are connected to the streetscape concept that we want to particularly bring to the attention of the council for their information. And one of the things, first of all, to remember, the reason that this 2012 concept plan was thrown in here is because, you know, if you're not aware, this is not a last-minute thing that came up because we're redoing the highway. This is something that's been talked about in chamber committees, my design committee that I've been involved in for several years. It was the subject of this task force back in 2012. The concept of complete streets and streetscape is, you know, there's a statewide organization. There's a lot of history here in taking a look at what does it take, and particularly in our number of Iowa communities that are both blessed and cursed with having a state highway be their main street. You know, that's, that's, makes it a challenge. Back in 2012, the report said, "It's no secret that Bremer Avenue's state highway designation is considered an obstacle when discussing streetscape and pedestrian-friendly enhancements." And that has certainly been the case in our discussions. How do you, you know, if you, I think when you have the view that we, what we really need to make our main street vital is people on it. Not people just in a thoroughfare passing through it, but pedestrians, cyclists, even people that arrive by car, feeling it's a setup to enable them to conveniently get off the street, get off the main thing to reach their destinations here, and treat it as a destination. A place where they can come and do multiple things, spend some time in their life, enjoy it, increase their happiness, their chance to share the culture, things of that nature. That's, that's what we're talking about. And the areas of focus that we want to bring to your attention tonight that we developed in our, in our committee is, first of all, the curb extensions, the bumpouts. And these, the things I'm going to present are kind of in the order of dealing with the things that are most important to the fact that we are redoing the road. And what things do we need to take advantage of now as part of that process? Because if we don't, you know, we're not likely to want to redo these things again. I mean, we've dealt with Main Street, you know, not in the best condition for a long time, several projects on it. We're going to face another one in this, in this roadway that's going to upset us for a while. We're not going to want to do all that and then find out we need to now think about bumpouts or some of the other things that we're talking about. So this, that's the urgency in this, is that we incorporate as much as we can of what we're after here in the atmosphere we want to create downtown as part, to get the physical plant, the infrastructure lined up to allow us to be able to build on it. So bumpouts are probably the single most important thing, and there is, in our committee work and in our investigation throughout the citizens, there is a broad consensus of support for the bumpouts that are built into the design that's been presented by the DOT. Those maps that you're familiar with. I trust that you've all had a chance to see them. You know what I'm talking about. You know that there are some on both the east and west side of the river. They're, they're listed here as far as, you know, where the locations are. Have we got that up?
Mm-hmm.
All right. But I think you know what, you know what I'm talking about. And, and basically, what they've come up with and where they've located them is what people would like to see. There's just not a lot of exception with respect to that. It's a solid thought that that is something that people really want to see as part of this project. And, I don't know, do we have the pictures or examples of it? Okay. And these are from, isn't this from the 2012 material? The bumpouts that are shown here on, on what's on the screen, you have that on your screen too, so you know what I'm talking about. You know, the, the main idea of the bumpout is simply to shorten the distance across the street for the pedestrian. These bumpouts emphasized a lot of greenery and other design and things like that. That may or may be a part of what we do. Cost will determine, things like that. The most important thing is to eliminate a six-lane barrier. You know, and I think that in terms of your own evaluation of how this is important, that I think, you know, we're all members of the community. We all have opportunities to go up and down Main Street. And I think that, and I've done this many times, my office for the last several years has been on the west end of town, and I have many occasions to go to the jail and the courthouse on the east end of town. I can't wait for that highway to improve, even though I've now just moved my office downtown. Still, I can't wait for it to improve. But if you do that, and I think you can conduct this experiment yourself just about any time you want, you go downtown, and I think there are two things you're going to be likely to see. One is very little pedestrian traffic. I mean, it surprised me so often as I go down through on, you know, key parts of the day, there's business down there, but it's not people walking from store to store, crossing the street. You can go through there many times in broad daylight and have a hard time finding pedestrian traffic. Not a good thing. And the other thing is, if you do come across it at the intersections, the lighted intersections particularly, you'll see a lot of frustration trying to deal with that six-lane barrier. The, the length of this, of the wait to get a, get a walk sign and all that. I mean, I, I would guess that many of you have seen that. If you haven't taken the trouble to really focus in on that, do so the next few times you go through there and see, see what you see. And that's what we're talking about here. These are, these are basic to making it an environment that's inviting to the pedestrian. And the second most...
Can I just interject for a second?
Oh, you surely can.
Thank you. Dog and pony show, remember?
Yeah.
Just for your reference too, the locations that we're referring to that WHKS has already put, put into the current plan. On the west side of Bremer is on all four corners of 10th Street. The, the two corners on the east, or the west side of 8th Street, which is by Duos, thank you very much. The two corners on the east side of 6th Street, which is near Quickstar, all four corners of 4th Street, 1st Street, and on the east side, all four corners of 1st Street, 2nd Street, 3rd Street, and kind of an L section for the, the west side and the lower south side of 4th Street because of the, the rail trail that goes along there. So just for your reference, and those have, if you look at the plans that Mike Cherry has, it shows those in there already built in.
Obviously, some of those are lighted intersections, and some of them are just going to be designated crosswalks. And that's our next topic, crosswalks.
We have one kind of small bump out there at 4th Street right now.
Correct.
By the historic society.
Yep.
Yeah, right. On the north side. You know what you're talking about? Next to the historic society?
The south side or the Beth's Tribute?
There's one about veterans.
Okay.
It's on the west side of intersection. Correct. Fourth and South.
Right.
Yep.
Okay.
So with these bumpouts, go ahead.
People are wondering about that. That would be kind of an example.
Yeah, that's a mini example.
Great example.
Yeah. Steve, I have a question. You've made reference a couple times to six-lane barrier. I'm not sure what that means.
Well, there are four traveled roads, or lanes, and then there are two parking lanes.
I get it. Okay.
That's, and...
It constitutes the width of the road.
Right.
I see. Okay. Thanks.
And, yeah, right. Exactly. That's, that's it.
Any other questions about bumpouts?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have one more. Does the Iowa DOT have any opinion about having bumpouts on a street that's also a state highway? Is it okay with them that we do that?
That's a good question, and that would be for WHKS to work with the DOT to figure out. All this, all of this information is not only subject to your approval, but the DOT's approval as well.
I think one thing we talked about was that the bumpouts would affect the parking lane as opposed to the driving lanes. And so they're not as concerned about that part as long as the driving lanes are free. We would be concerned a little bit as a city because it would cause a little bit more difficulty with snow removal because of the, having to go around and through the parking lane. I think we've talked about that before, that that causes a little bit more work to get around and make the curbs.
Yep. They're also located to accommodate turning truck movements. So, for instance, on the southeast corner of 4th Street and Bremer, you would not have one because of the right turning truck movement. So you wouldn't be able to have one there. Also, over by the Water Street Grill, as you have southbound right turning trucks, there would not, you would not be able to have a bumpout. So sometimes they're limited in where you can place them because of the high volume of turning truck traffic. One thing that we are also looking at is occasionally we do have some delivery trucks in the downtown area such as 1st, 2nd, 3rd Street on the east side of town. So we want to make sure that these bumpouts can accommodate some of those trucks. And basically, the, the rear wheels would be able to actually mount and drive up over the top of these bumpouts as well.
There appears to be, I mean, I know we mentioned the one by the historical society, by the museum there on, on 4th and Bremer, but to me, it seems like one block north, it's bumped out there too, on the west side, on the southwest side of that corner. Well, at least, maybe it's just my driving skills, but whenever I turn the corner there, like I, and I didn't use to, and I'd say for the last, I don't know how long, last year or whatever, I, I, every once in a while, I hit the curb there.
Sure. Up around the junior high, there were the bus lanes and the drop-off pickup, drop-off pickup lanes, or there was some diagonal park-in 1st Avenue. So those have, also have the appearance of being bumpouts.
Yeah.
And that represents what we talked about as far as having the curb more flat so that the trucks can, can go over top of that. That's a, that's a bumpout in Prairie Sheen, Wisconsin.
Having technical difficulties?
Can go back to that.
Okay. All right. Well, the next related thing is crosswalks, which are at the bumpout intersections in connection with the bumpouts. And it, and the crosswalks are just the designation that when, in the lighted areas, when the pedestrian has the green light and they're in the intersection, they have the priority. And in the non-lighted areas, that a pedestrian wishing to cross has the priority. As the signs we have up in, in some of these areas right now indicates, that's the state law. And so the crosswalks, the painting and the, and the texturing that's referred to here are simply designed to make them prominent features. And as we all know from our experience with painting the crosswalks or painting the, the bar for the stop signs, you know, we have a climate where things tend to fade. That isn't a bright line very long. And that's where the texturing comes in, to actually change underneath those markings, the texture of the pavement to further enhance the fact that this is a crosswalk. Any questions about that? I don't know if anybody's familiar with that or thought about that. I don't know exactly how that's done, but...
Using different colored bricks, things like that.
Yeah, so there are, there are different designs, obviously. As you can see, the two examples that we have here, one is in West Union, which simply incorporates concrete and brick. The other one I found online, which is from British Columbia, which has an actual fun sunray design on it. There's all kinds of different designs you could do. There's also texturing designs that you can do with the asphalt. Normally, how a crosswalk is created, they'll, they'll lay down the, the new asphalt, then they'll actually cut out a chunk and then fill it in with concrete and then paint or incorporate the, the crosswalk stripes there. But there's also ways too to keep the asphalt and texture the asphalt in such a way that it creates a section so that it can be striped and it can be colored. No, I think there was...
Road surface is concrete. But the road, the road surface itself will be concrete, and what you do is replace the, the crosswalk with...
Sorry, so asphalt's the wrong word. So concrete, my apologies. But, but still being able to, to, to texture that in such a way that it denotes a, a crosswalk in the area, so.
How does, how does brick hold up with, you know, truck traffic, freezing and thawing, salt? All of the above?
Right. That's the challenge, is that this is a state highway with a large volume of traffic and quite a bit of truck traffic as well. So that's going to be one of the challenges for WHKS and the DOT is, is, is there something we can do that provides the contrast for the enhanced pedestrian safety as well as being durable and able to withstand the volume of traffic and the truck traffic?
You think that's primarily something that's going to involve brick? Or are there other, I was, I guess, thinking there were other ways to just use concrete itself or texturing of that?
Yep. Colored concrete, textured concrete. Yes.
We just wanted to be able to work with WHKS, who's obviously done this type of thing before, to, to kind of give us their thoughts as far as weather conditions, the way the road is being used, that kind of thing, and what would be the, the most appropriate options for crosswalks.
I mean, oh, sorry, Dan. Go ahead.
I think it's great that this is in here because I've kind of watched with the crosswalks along the park over on 1st Street. Worked with Cary School to get a crosswalk up there. And it's amazing when it's visual to folks how it just changes their driving patterns naturally. It's not forcing them to stop. They're just more attentive and...
Absolutely.
I think it's a great concept to make sure we bring forward.
I really want to reinforce that. You know, these things by themselves don't do the job. I mean, bumpouts don't put pedestrians on the, you know, on the street. Crosswalks don't do it. They just simply create a visual, a clear indication for both the pedestrian and the driver that they belong here, that they're a consideration, that they're something we want to take into account. It's not just a throughway. We're not just dealing with automobiles. We're dealing with people wanting to do things and, and, you know, and that's, and their protection is a priority. And that's, you know, so it's, it's like a series of little things, then they add up and just change the, the way people view things. And we, and the, the documentation and the display information that's available through organizations like Complete Streets and all that are dramatic and showing a before and after of what difference it makes when, when something is designed and clearly designed with the intent to invite that kind of presence, bikes, walking, whatever. And that just changing the expectations of people, that yes, they belong here. They're, they're legal, they're proper, and we need to accommodate them, itself makes a great deal of difference with this.
These samples of textured crossings are pretty fancy, pretty nice. Are we talking about significant, do you think, significant increase in cost to do something with textured surfaces?
Really couldn't say. I mean, that's, that's why we want to work with HK, WHKS to, to find out, first of all, what some options would be given the, their use of the roadway and, and weather conditions, and then take a look at those options and see what the cost would be and present those at a later date. Edie, did you have a question? I'm sorry, I didn't want to...
Oh, I just had a comment. I, I was just going to say that I thought that with regard to the, the brick issue, which I could imagine might be problematic. It looks like in these two pictures that we have that the, that the one on the right might be colored concrete or something like that. And, I mean, I know I've seen a lot of, I don't know if it's the same thing, but I've seen a lot of patios lately in homes that are textured and colored concrete that are, you know, beautiful. So I don't particularly like this design, but that's just me. You know, we could do another design, you know, like our river logo or something, or, you know.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would just say, I think that in terms of the view, the experience with, with brick on sidewalks and things that we've had, I think that the approach is, practicality is the king here. We don't want to do anything that's going to be a high maintenance or a showy thing. The trouble with just paint, just color, is our environment. That it's very hard to have it be a bright line for a long time. So that's why you want to enhance that some. And that's, I guess, the thought that I've had, just by, just by being able to raise it a little bit. Same, not with a brick surface, but just, but the way you cut it and things like that, that could be more of a permanent thing, no matter how bright the white line is or whatever color it is. But I think practicality is the key here. We're not looking to, you know, have the city spend a fortune on all this. But, but we do want to address... but we do want to address making it a welcoming atmosphere that invites the public to be down there. And so, the next, the next point, if we can go on, unless there's anything else, we'll, and questions anytime, we prefer to, you know, monologues. The next item is sidewalk brick repositioning. And maybe Travis, you know better than I the details of why this, I think this has come up because the DOT is going to need to do some sidewalk change of elevation. There's going to have to be some sidewalk work, and that's where this comes from.
Absolutely, and Bill can help me out on this too, but it's my understanding that the the project will include taking out the sidewalks, usually a four-foot stretch, I think, on most most of Breamer Avenue, but when you get to the downtown area, it'll actually go up to the building fronts because of the infrastructure work that's to be done. Is that correct? So, that's 12 feet?
Sixteen, it'd be sixteen to the building front, so maybe 12, I think, is what they're showing on some of the preliminary designs.
And.
I think one of the discussions was, is that if we get into doing water service replacement in the downtown, that by the time you, you do the trench and stuff, you're, you're going to be excavating up to the building. Very least, you're, to get to a new shut off, you're probably going to be disturbing the 12 feet behind the back of the curb. And so, if you start having to remove and replace half to two-thirds of the sidewalk and brickwork, is this an opportunity to look at changing it all?
Right. So, with that said, we, as a committee, took a lot of information in from community members and business owners with regards to the brick. A lot of people liked the look of the brick, just didn't like the functionality of the brick. The brick sometimes is very slippery, especially in the winter time and the climates in that season. But they like the look of it. So, what was proposed and what a lot of people thought would be a great repositioning of the brick was to have a two-foot inserted bricks along the curb side of the sidewalk. And in, in so doing this, we would hope to be able to use some kind of concrete base so that the bricks could be inserted in with holes underneath for water and drainage. And this would eliminate unevenness and a lot of maintenance. It would, it would keep the bricks fairly even. Okay, they all have one, so great. So, you can see that on your.
That's the under.
That's the base.
So, the underbase where the bricks would be. And it keeps the appeal of the bricks, but at the same time, we're able to reuse the current bricks that we currently have, hoping to keep costs down. And some examples of that would be found on the next slide. Is that right? Okay, great. Would be here in Grand Rapids, Michigan and Prairie Des Chene. Mostly, the Grand Rapids, Michigan picture to the left is, is more of what we're talking about with that two-foot stretch of brick along the side and the idea of maybe wrapping around the light poles and maybe planters and whatnot on the sidewalk, as in the Prairie Des Chene picture.
And in these areas, if we were to go to that, it would be taking out that center broader strip that's in the middle of the sidewalk where we have some issues as far as ice and raising and things like that. So, and the source of the brick to do this, we think, will largely be the existing brick that's coming out of those areas.
Keeping the walkway, you know, mostly concrete and an even surface, easier to shovel, easier to maintain, that kind of thing during the winter time.
We understand that there may be some areas in the east side of downtown especially, and also on the west side, on the south side of the road, where the, there's, the curbs are significantly sunk. You know, the road kind of curves down and the curb kind of goes down too, and the sidewalk's not ADA compliant right now. And if we were going to take up 12 feet, we could actually level it off more. They could work with us to design a leveler surface for the sidewalks up to the curb and then to the street. So, you'd have a better appearance and you'd have better compliance with ADA requirements.
So, I think, you know, it's making the brick more of an accent. And in addition to the strips we're talking about, there's thought that they might be used in connection with our bench locations or our planters or whatever, just as something to kind of.
Did your discussion include the area that you would recommend this? Is it just the east side downtown business, or is it through to the west, or?
Go ahead.
No, that's okay. It's throughout the, the east side downtown and the west side downtown, all the way to, I believe we thought Fifth would be where this would be incorporated.
Now, this picture here though, that you just put up is, is more than two feet, right?
That's a four-foot section. That's just an example of Macocata's four-foot section.
Yeah, okay.
Where is this one?
Macocata.
That's really impressive, since Macocata's entire downtown seems to be closed right now.
That's, that was, this was taken from that.
It doesn't, yeah.
And there was also an example of that Oskaloosa on the bump outs, and you'll see it again in the planters that has a strip, a two-foot strip along the edge.
Any other questions about brick that we can answer for you?
I'd say these three things that we've just covered, the bump outs, the crosswalks, and now the brick, are the things that I think are the most crucial considerations now, because they're, we're not going to want to tear up later to do these things. These are things that, let's figure out if we want to do something now. If we do, great, if, but whatever we do, this is probably not going to be something we want to revisit the next summer.
Well, we felt like these were more important because of the permanent aspect of them. So, you know, obviously, since the streets torn up and the sidewalks are torn up, you know, these are things that can be incorporated into the project that, you know, would be permanent. And so, we just felt like that those were of the utmost importance.
So, the next item is light poles, and this is in the, this is in the downtown area. What are we talking about here, Travis? Just the blocks, just east and west of the river?
Yeah, I think there was a, there was a consensus among community folks and business owners that they'd like to see a more concentrated light poles with banners and flags more in the downtown area, again, the east side and west side to about Third or Fourth, and then kind of taper it off from there, going along the rest of Breamer Avenue as was felt appropriate. But the reason why we bring this up is because there was a lot of, subject to adding banners to our, to our current light poles. And we currently now have flag receptacles that get used during holidays. But to add banners to the light poles was something that was quite common among comments that we received. In talking with Waverly Utilities, it looks like that the, the poles that would, that would have these banner brackets on them would need to be replaced in order to have a stronger pole to withstand the wind and the torque. The banner kind of acts as a sail, and so, it would need a stronger pole. And so, we were thinking that, you know, keeping the flags on the street side, adding pole brackets to either the lower part of that or even the sidewalk side of the light pole would be, would be a decorative addition to our, to our community. As well as being able to repurpose the old poles and use them in maybe newer neighborhoods that were being developed, so not to, just discard them. So, that was, that was the consensus for light poles.
Can the, can the current light poles, probably not, I'm guessing, hold the, hold plants like the ones in Coleman?
No, they cannot. And I, the jury's still out on the current, the poles that we have right now, whether or not they can hold the banners. But from Waverly Utilities' standpoint, more than likely, they would have to be replaced. And probably have to be replaced with a stronger light pole even yet if they were to, to hold flowers.
And it was the banners and flags that interested the people that, you know, the businesses on Main Street. There wasn't any great mention of flowers.
It was also, sorry, it was also thought too, that, you know, they might be changed out two, three times a year depending on the season, or if we wanted to have custom banners made with, with the city's logo on it, welcoming people to the community. Maybe doing every other one with a different design depending on the season and the welcome logo, that kind of thing. So, there's a lot of different things that you can do, but when you go around to different communities throughout Iowa and certainly in the Midwest, there are a lot of these that just bring a nice charm to any communities downtown.
And there is support to continue to have trees and planters be a part of the landscape in downtown with the understanding that even now, we're in the process of redoing some of those. We've removed some. There's a different concept of what, what we're putting in now as, as far as trees are concerned, to replace old positions, to use smaller varieties that are less encumbering to the view of the businesses behind them, but still provide some amenity to the pedestrian or some shade or relief of that kind. But those, those are things that help to soften the environment down there and just make it a more pleasant place for people to be and to, to enjoy themselves. So, go ahead, you have anything else on it?
Our studies found that people really enjoyed both, trees and planters. And so, we were hoping to be able to work with WHKS, with your approval, to create a balanced design that would incorporate both trees and planters. As Steve said, you know, trees bring a welcoming look to any downtown. Planter foliage can be changed to reflect different seasons with regards to winter or summer, spring. Obviously, trees provide shade, and I think with the removal of some trees along Main Street, some businesses have missed that shade, especially on the north side of Breamer Avenue. So, we'd like to see somehow the trees being able to incorporate that. Planters too can also be mobile. They, they can be moved, they can be stored away if needed. So, they're, they're not in the way if a project happens or if something that needs to go along the sidewalk occurs that we can go ahead and move those. Obviously, trees would require a regular amount of maintenance from the city, and this was a concern to, to business owners that make sure that if we were to incorporate trees into the plan, that they would be maintained, they wouldn't be, you know, let, gone astray and then having to pull them or cut them down, so. And then, the Chamber also thought too, maybe in conjunction with the city, could implement some kind of adoption plan for, for planters. And we talked to business owners about that idea, and, and they were very agreeable to wanting to adopt a planter to be able to take care of it, you know, clean it when it needed to be, maintain it, water it, that, that kind of thing. So, those options are out there with regards to the planters and trees. Any questions about trees or planters?
Just a, just a comment, excuse me. I never appreciated what trees can do to a Main Street until I visited in McMinnville, Oregon. Are you familiar with the city? Between Portland and Salem in the valley. And it's been, it's been called the most beautiful Main Street in Oregon. It's really quite something to see. You ought to go online and find that, or if you have extra budget, just go out there and look.
We noted that there were planters and garbage cans that would match the benches that we currently are, have been putting out, the benches that are already there. So, you could actually do some mobile planters that would be very consistent with what's already in the downtown.
And examples of those would be these here on your screen from Dubuque, Oskaloosa, and West Union. And actually, I believe the Dubuque and Oskaloosa planters actually incorporated some kind of design on them. I do know that the Oskaloosa one had some kind of design in the material that's made, that the planters built out of historic pictures of the community, which is interesting as well. So, again, some of those unique elements that I talked about earlier that can create a charm to a community's particular heritage or, or community or history. Also too, you know, just having been involved in this project, you know, you, when you go away for a little while and visit somewhere else, you start looking at streets and designs differently. I was just to this past weekend in Excelsior, Minnesota, and went down their Main Street, and I wasn't looking at any of the shops, I was looking at their planters and their light poles and, you know, their streetscape. So, I invite you certainly, when you do travel around, to take a look at some of those, those items. It does change your viewpoint of things.
I think just the final thing is that the benches that we are already familiar with, there's some bike racks that are in the downtown area, and then the trash and receptacles are all things that people along Main Street are interested in, continuing that. And I think one thing we want to, you know, make clear is that, you know, this stuff needs some work, and we want to be able to have some time devoted to it with the WHKS and to develop some of this and maybe get an idea of whether we need a few more of these or a few less of those and how we might incorporate some of these things. It's going to take a little study, and that's why we're hoping that we can make that, whatever funding might be needed in connection with the time they need to spend on working with the concepts that we're talking about to make that available so that we can come back with a, with a final proposal. There isn't anything final right now. This thing's, these are amenities, there's differences of opinion, not everybody wants to do it the same way. Practicality is king. So, we've got, we just want to be able to do some work on these things, and these are the things that we think will, will help us. And, you know, again, you know, now it's just such a heightened importance as this is our opportunity. You know, if we don't get these things done, if we don't get them looked at now, the odds that we'll get these things in the future is, you know, much, much more difficult and much more disruptive. And so, it's really important for us to take a hard look, see what we can do.
Any questions about the non-permanent features, the benches, bicycle racks, trash and recycling receptacles? Consensus was among our studies was that people just want to see more of them incorporated into the streetscape. Somewhere in the ballpark of about, you know, three bicycle racks somewhere located downtown. We have an outdoor, Crowd Addies outdoor, I mean, a lot of, a lot of bikes parked out in the front of that building all the time. People coming in on their bicycles, they want, we feel like we should have a place for them to be able to park. Benches near trees and planters is ideal, and certainly trash and incorporating recycle receptacles too, near planters would help reduce the, the littering of trash in, in those planters. So, we, we hope that that would be a part of the streetscape. Are there any questions that I can answer right now?
I know that we've been talking signage for a couple of years now. Does that play into the type of?
It's a good question.
That we might look at, those type of things.
I know that wayfinding's been, been a topic lately, and the committee really felt like wayfinding should be a separate project. It's certainly one that could be incorporated in this. It would certainly add an additional cost to the project, but it would have to basically start with hiring a consulting firm and finding out in what ways we needed to add wayfinding to, to not only Breamer Avenue, but different parts of our community that, that need signage.
I can understand not wanting the scope creep that that brings into it.
Yeah.
If you look at the. We have to keep it in mind if we're thinking of using the utility poles, the light poles for it, or if we can be incorporated into the planters, those type of things.
If you look back at the, like, the 2012, 2012 plan, there are lots of things in there that, that we did not touch on, such as work with the river and other things like that. We just wanted to focus on what was related, we thought, to the highway work and where this might be the opportune time to, to get it done. Just like to, just say, we've got a number of our hardworking committee members. We've put a lot of time in, they've put a lot of effort in. Did we miss anything? Is there something else we should have had? Did we cover it?
They're pretty quiet.
I guess so.
There's a reason why they're not presenting tonight.
Time too long again, that's what they're saying.
To kind of just recap too, the, you know, there are a lot of concepts in the, in the concept plan of 2012 that weren't incorporated, but there was also additional ones too that came out of the meetings that we had. Things like electric car charging stations. One ways on side streets to, to add more possible parking, and these are, these are really great ideas and concepts that we would like to see at a later time. We just didn't feel like they really were a part of this particular project. But as we grow as a city and as we grow in our, in our business districts, we're hoping to see more and more creative elements added to our, to our community, so. Any further questions that I can answer? Then that concludes our presentation to you. Hope that that was informational.
Thank you.
Yes, and thanks to your commission for their work. Good work.
Appreciate the Chamber stepping up and kind of steering this, because it needs to be incorporated. And unfortunately, a lot of us just look at the street and we want to get cars moving on it. And we need folks that deal with the public on a daily basis to help us look at how to use the street better.
Okay, that's our only item we had on the study session calendar. Next, we have reports from boards and commissions. We have the Airport Commission minutes from April, and the Library Board of Trustees minutes from June. Who accepts? We then go to staff comments. James, do we have anything?
Yes, sir, we do have a few. I'll turn it over to Bill and to Mike here in a minute. I know there's been some discussion on some goal setting. I know we call it strategic planning, but it's more of a goal-setting session, because it's not quite the in-depth that a strategic plan would be. And in looking forward calendar-wise, I think October, that study session's probably a good time for us to finalize it. We'd like to try and get with staff and get with some of the commissions to get them moving on early mid-range goals as well for September sometime. Looking ahead at my calendar, I won't be here for the strategic, or the strategic, for the planning session in September, I'll be at a conference, but we still can maybe deliver it in September at some point, or early October, and then have council then meet for these October session to truly put that plan together as we go through. And then as far as any other comments, and I'll let Bill go ahead and give us an update on Tarex, and I'll have Mike move forward and give us an update on where we are with Green Bridge and timing and just our next session for that, so, if you would, Bill.
Okay. I know that I was gone today, but Connie has finalized some things with the workforce, and, and I'll just give you some brief highlights. We focus our, in economic development, on finding job opportunities for the affected workers. The primary source for job postings is the Economic Development Job website. That is, so far, 30 companies have posted jobs on that site, or contacted our office about posting jobs on the site as a direct result of the plant closings. Many of the companies are hiring multiple people for the positions posted. We're real hopeful that there's going to be a lot of opportunity out there for those people that are affected by this closure. We're, we're just trying to get out the, the message on our website or on Facebook page that anyone with questions about the job site, wanting assistance, can call us at the Economic Development Office, stop by our office for assistance, we'll, we'll step them through, we'll help them search for jobs, we'll do whatever, because we, we really want to help them in any way they can. And it's not always easy just to say, yeah, get on the website, go ahead and work on it yourself, because a lot of people aren't able to do that. So we're trying to emphasize to them is, stop in during the day, Paige or Connie or I'll work through it with you, we'll go through the website, we'll show you how to use the website, we'll show you the jobs and how to identify them. And I know we're even talking to the library staff about kind of being aware of that, so they can do the same thing out at the library.
I was going to ask.
Yep, yep, we're going to work with them, too. The Iowa Workforce Development's Rapid Response Team, we were in contact with them the, the day of the announcement. They've scheduled an employee information, or two meetings for the displaced workers on Thursday, the 28th, at the Civic Center. The meetings will be held at 10 o'clock in the morning and 1:00 PM, and affected individuals are strongly encouraged to attend one of the sessions. They'll have information about unemployment benefits and services offered by the partner agencies that will be, that will be present. Our Economic Development Office will be presenting information about job opportunities and help with the job website at that time also. Iowa Workforce Development in partnership with Hawkeye Community College and Waverly Economic Development will be holding a hiring event, a job fair, on August 23rd in, at the Waverly Civic Center. This event's going to be open to the public, and employers interested in participating should contact Workforce Development to get signed up, because they're the ones that run the fair. We'll be assisting with that. They are going to have another one in Waterloo, I believe, in the, in that same timeframe, but they're going to do one up here for us. I think there's going to be a lot of people here, so a lot of employers. Great opportunity for these people to, to come and find some positions and talk to some employers.
Bill, are the, the affected workers at Tarex aware of all of these opportunities you're talking about, or are you able to reach them, or how do they find out?
That we have, we have, they have a mailing list, so they're being notified of these informational meetings and this information by direct mailings. Just to give you an idea, about 20% of these people are, are probably from here in town, and probably 80% of the hundred, the first hundred workers were from outside Waverly as far as their residences. So we're hopeful that the fact that we have 30 companies from all over the, the area will help those that, that aren't necessarily residents here with finding, finding jobs.
Yeah, I was impressed with the companies that have put theirs out there since the announcement and.
They were excited, they, they were calling the first day, the first and second day.
Very comparable quality jobs.
Mm-hmm. Very good, very good jobs. So we're hopeful that that's, that's kind of taken the, the, taken the step that we need to take for those people, so that they don't feel like they're, what am I going to do next? We, we feel like we have given some options, and we'll have some options this week and, and continue to have options for the next month or two.
Mike?
Sorry, what? Which one?
Update, Green Bridge, timing, WHKS meeting, et cetera.
So they are wrapping up the preliminary design work on the bridge. There's kind of a three-step process going forward, milestones, that you have the preliminary design and, or preliminary plans, and then check plans and final plans as you move into the letting process. So they're at the check plan stage, they're wrapping that up this week. It's being, going through its internal review at the WHKS offices. Additionally, Brian Nirtak has submitted the boring logs to WHKS, but they are in the process of actually writing up the technical report. They anticipate that later this week, that will also be submitted to WHKS. Casey Faber is available to come down for the August 15th council meeting and provide an update as far as the design process and progress, as well as the results of the boring logs, and how that may or may not impact the project going forward. Additionally, what we would like to do is discuss with the council the marketing plan for going out there and identifying qualified, competent contractors that are capable of doing this type of repair and restoration work, and trying to make them aware of it, let them know that it's coming up, that we're looking at a February 2017 letting, so that we're able to also solicit their input as well. Oftentimes, once you get through the preliminary plan phase, you, you start soliciting some input from contractors. I know WHKS has already done that, but we want to make sure that this is a buildable project and an appealing project that contractors want to bid on, to, to try to get as much interest as possible. So that's another component to the process that we have going forward, and so we'll be reviewing that as well on August 15th. I think it's also a good time, August 15th, to provide an update on the Dry Run Creek. As I like to say, we can see the lake at the end of the Portage, which is kind of like seeing the light at the end of the tunnel. It's a good feeling to know that the project is nearing completion. We had talked about a completion date of around Labor Day. I think we are on target to achieve that, or very close, although it will be dependent upon the weather moving forward. That's what I've got.
You are from Minnesota, aren't you?
Well, you know, we're talking about Crowd Addies, so I thought I'd use that analogy.
Mike, so the, the marketing plan that you mentioned, is, is that something that is included in the original, original cost estimates for the bridge, or what, what kind of, I'm assuming that's going to cost something?
Well, it's something that, that we'll probably take on in-house.
Okay.
With support from WHKS. The DOT has a pre-qualification process for special bridge, bridge projects, so they already have identified all the contractors within the Midwest that they would typically notify or expect to, to see on this type of a, of a project. So it'd be simply for us to do direct mailings to make these contractors aware of the project. That is above and beyond what, what the DOT would do. The DOT has their bid letting list, you know, they, they let projects monthly, and it is up to the contractors to kind of keep tabs on that. This takes it one step further, that we actually do direct mailings to them to make them aware of the, the project here in Waverly. We routinely do that already with our own projects. We know contractors that have bid on similar type work in the past, so we, we always reach out to them and send them a notice of the upcoming letting.
So I'm assuming that part of this might also have to do with the fact that it's a custom bridge repair?
Well, that, that certainly makes us want to even further our efforts to, to make sure that we, we try to notify as many contractors within, you know, the qualified contractors within a reasonable distance that may be interested in this. It is a very tough bidding environment right now, there's lots of work out there, and we do have a concern that, you know, is there going to be interest in doing a, a more specialized technical project? There, there's lots of, you know, projects that, you know, are very, they're very comfortable with, they're, they do all the time, they're standard kind of like cookie cutter type projects, there's a lot of that work out there. And so if you have one of these specialty projects that comes up, we are concerned about what level of interest there may be at this point in time. So that means that we want to cast as big of a net as possible in order to make sure that contractors are aware of it.
Mm-hmm. And it's probably also reasonable then to conclude that the estimates may be even higher if it's a project that generally contractors don't want to do.
It, that, that would be the case, but again, the, the letting's not until February, and.
Yeah.
You, you just don't know.
Right.
But you have enough, broad enough, you have a broad enough base of contractors that are capable, and you're, and everybody knows that they are all down tacked, and, you know, it makes them more competitive as well, so.
If they want it. No, it sounds like we're... You answered my question, thanks.
Thank you. Go to city council comments? I'm going to start over here, since Mike said he's, he used to leave at 8:00, and we're at 8:00.
Well, I, I just want to congratulate Carla Guyer on her 29th birthday yesterday.
Thank you, Mike. In a minute, please.
I just know this time of the year before school, we see a lot of crosswalks being painted, that type of thing. Do we still plan to do the downtown section, knowing that it's going to get tore up next year, or are we going to let that go this year?
Painting is an annual, annual event, so, you know, even, even if there's a construction project scheduled for next year, we would still paint it this year, yeah, because it's done annually.
On this side, ED?
Just, I have a question about that, and then, and then just one comment. So the, the crosswalk that used to be there kind of still is there from, let's see, from Wardburg to, to the OP? That, that's no longer really a crosswalk, right?
See, that, that would be at Ninth Street.
Yes.
Correct, yeah. We, we do not promote that as, as a pedestrian crossing. We have 10th Street, which is signaledized, and then we, we look at like every other block, so Eighth Street, Sixth Street, Fourth Street.
Yeah.
And, and so you're, you're never more than one and a half blocks away from a, either a traffic signal or designated pedestrian.
Yeah, that one just kind of seems to be in Never Never Land, because it, you know, you, there are still stripes there, but they don't get painted, and so I just assumed it really wasn't functional, but I think for people who don't know that, it's confusing. I don't know that there's anything to do about it, but people do cross there thinking that cars should stop sometimes, and it's very dangerous, but. And then my comment is just, thanks to the staff for all the work with the, the former workers at Tarex. I, I think that, that you were all very quickly on that, and hopefully it's been helpful to them, so, thank you.
I'd like to say the same thing, as far as, you know, you've done a great job of getting these people, as a former employee, it's coring at that point when I worked there. You know, this is a tough time for these people, and, and I appreciate everything that you're doing.
Just to make sure that you appreciate what Connie and Paige are doing right now, because they're doing a lot of work on, on the, on the backside, and on the front side, too.
We'll share our thanks with them, too, yeah. And we will, too.
Beth, your last meeting with us?
Yes, thank you.
Both of them that we have.
Yeah, thank you for having me. I really appreciated the civility of the conversations this evening. That was really very nice, a little bit of a contrast to last week, I must say. I have high expectations of my elected officials, and I appreciate civil conversation when that happens, so thank you for that this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the work you do to keep the city moving forward. I work in Hudson, I'm out of town more than I'm in town, it seems like, and I tell you, there are a lot of people south of us who are envious of Waverly, and think it's a great community, and so the fact that we continue to push, how can we make the community better, you know, the work that you do is noticed and appreciated, and so I commend you all for that. Thank you.
I just had a couple of comments, one with the Breamer County Fair back in town and in the area, just aware of the extra traffic, and be patient as, as usual, we're, we're kind of used to that in the downtown area, or at least in the Memorial Park area, the fairgrounds area of, of Waverly, is the traffic kind of gets busy there, and fun stuff that's happening around there. The other one that I, I noted is that, kind of a, kind of an advance notice, that next Tuesday, I believe, is the National Night Out. Is that correct?
August 2nd.
August 2nd, yeah.
National what?
National Night Out at Coleman with officers, and kind of a nice way to, to show appreciation and kind of community togetherness as, as well with that, so those are just my couple things on that, so. Motion.
Move adjourned.
Second.
Moved in second, and all in favor?
Yes.
We are adjourned.